Have you seen this crazy yodeling kid? OMG, it's so funny.
Hey, the new house looks great. How are you liking it here?
Well, I...
You wouldn't expect this in your home.
What?
Welcome to a meeting of your Planning Commission, the official local planning agency for the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace Plan City, and unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planning Commission provides innovative leadership and long-range vision that contributes to the creation of a thriving prosperous community that offers opportunity, fairness, and choice in how we live, move, learn, work, and play. For more information about the Planning Commission, please call 813-272-5940. Follow us on social media or visit our website at planhillsborough.org.
Good afternoon. Welcome to November 18th, 2019 Public Hearing of the Planning Commission on Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendments. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation are encouraged. If you will, please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. If you wish to address the Commission on a specific amendment, we ask that you please complete the appropriate public comment sign-in sheet at the back of the room. When addressing the Commission, please begin with your name, address, and speak directly into the microphone. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be presented. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chairman. The public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. Planning Commissioners will then ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, second, and discussion, a vote will be taken. Roll call, please.
Good evening. Bernstein?
Here.
Cardenas?
Here.
Dickerson?
Here.
Dix?
Here.
Dowdy?
Here.
Green?
Present.
Joseph?
Here.
Press?
Here.
Marina? Howell? Rodriguez?
Here.
Thrower?
Here.
And Yevakor.
Okay, thank you. We will move right into item number two on the agenda. Tampa... what? Okay. I just wanted to let everybody know that Tampa Comprehensive Amendment 19-12, Future Land Use Map Amendment, which is item three on our agenda, is being continued because of a notice issue. It will be continued until the December meeting?
January.
January, January meeting. Thank you, Melissa. Now, we're going to go back to item number two, Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment 19-13.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to address you on this item. Michelle Ogilvy, Plan Hillsborough. This is a plan amendment that we have been working on for the last four years. And so, I will try to be very brief, but I have to tell the story. It is an amendment to the Tampa Comprehensive Plan text, and it introduces a new objective and a new policy that we, as I said before, have been working on and negotiating for some time. In your packet, we did provide you the language, but I would like to support the effort with reading just briefly and highlighting that we are recommending the introduction of health in all policies and what it is, that it starts with where people live, work, learn, and play, and that we, as policymakers, have a role in how that is enjoyed throughout our city. Because health promoting and welfare involves a variety of partners for implementation, the plan has been updated. When it is updated, we will look at things such as establishing some criteria for the persons who are aging, for those who have disabilities, for safety, for access to jobs, schools, healthcare, healthy food, and recreation, and to support the tracking and effectiveness of our comprehensive plan with those baselines, and supporting an evidence-based measurement baseline for the goals, objectives, and policies through that lens of health in all policies. As I said before, it has been a long journey of four years. This is a summary of that work that we have undertaken, the Planning Commission and Metropolitan Planning Organization, as well as the Department of Health in Hillsborough, Department of Health, which is pretty unique to our state. And I'd like to just take a minute to thank Rachel Chase, who is here today, to just provide moral support for all the work that they did in helping us get to this point. We had a collaborative approach, and the Health Department provided that evidence base that is important to health in all policies. What shapes our health is our many things, but 50% of it belongs in the realm of policy, public policy. And so, things such as access to education, employment, income, family support, community safety, air and water quality, housing, and access to transit all take part in how a human being expresses their health. We have had a trend in the United States that is expressed in this graphic that shows our growth in obesity, and one of the correlations for not being healthy, diabetes. And you can see that it has grown over time. This does come from the Center for Disease Control and was helped... I have to confess, I lifted it out of Ford Pinellas's presentation that they were making on one of our meetings that we had with them. Health in all policies is a collaborative way of connecting and integrating health through transportation and land use, parks and recreation, infrastructure, economic development, and even energy. They all come together to give us a healthy expression. And how does planning projects improve health? We can address things such as injury and mortality. You may have heard of Vision Zero. Useful physical activity, getting on your bicycle, being able to walk on a good sidewalk, connecting to a park perhaps, or maybe a job. It's about being active. Our air quality reduces asthma, and how that's expressed and grown in our time here. Access to goods, services, and resources, such as healthcare, are also important. And this is a policy statement from the American Public Health Association that we've been able to pull. And I mean to remind us that planning and health have had a long relationship. They started together in the 19th century and have been moving forward. So, I always say, we're joining again. We measure what we value, and I just put down some of the things that are very common to us, like, you know, number of lane miles and levels of service. But when we are thinking about health, we need to connect our systems. And so, one of the projects that we worked on together was identifying what is known as food access and food deserts. And part of the reason, going back to the obesity question, is that children who live in food deserts tend to be more obese than others who live in what's called a food oasis. So, our project was to identify with the Health Department these food deserts. And then, we started talking about community gardens, which is a very simple way and low-cost way of providing access to healthy food. And we moved forward with some of that data. One of the things when we're talking about health is, well, where is that health data residing? And Plan Hillsborough has created a health atlas that is able to show health in the environment, in transportation connections, in the food environment. Of course, emergency preparedness is also one of the things that we take care of. In our health atlas, we have established database, a baseline for diabetes, obesity, asthma, low leisure time access, and physical and mental health. And one of the things that we're showing you here is the prevalence of diabetes in our city and where it locates or expresses itself. Another thing that we have also done is taking a look at where our high crashes for pedestrians and bicyclists occur. And we find that there is a correlation between where those things occur, as well as our food deserts. So, there's something definitely needed to be taken a better look at. Come on. We've pulled down some information that is also provided to the public. This is from the Environmental Protection Agency on heightened scores of things like air toxins. Are you going to come? So, as we said in the objective and policy, our ingredients for the health in all policies include active transportation, aging, disability, and access to jobs, schools, healthcare, healthy food, and recreation. Let's see if that works better. St. Petersburg, Pinellas County, Pinellas Park have all embraced health in all policies and have provided jobs for planners, which they negotiate through across their city departments or county departments to raise the awareness of health in all policies. For the MPO, we have adopted the Health in All Policies Resolution and just completed a review of the Long Range Transportation Plan. Washington, DC has been addressing youth and walking and bicycling to work. Sorry about this one. I borrowed this from Palm Beach. It shows how you can look at projects such as the one you all are doing with transit, looking at US-1 and whether we could get what transit would do if we considered health. And in Palm Beach, they looked at access to healthcare, the chronic diseases such as diabetes, where their crash rates were. They also looked at the economics of taxable land and found that with using that lens, they were able to bring, within a 10-minute walk, 229,000 additional riders to their transit system, allow for 45 schools and children being able to access an 138% increase in household jobs and access to work. Again, the key benefits of the Health in All Policies includes that policy is a much more long-lasting event than a programmatic collaboration. It's very inexpensive if it's done while you're using the resources that you have. So, it's like a two-for-one, creating an environment that helps individuals make choices, like, maybe I'll walk to that recreational facility because I can, because there is a sidewalk. And of course, our planners made those thoughts as they laid out in the subdivision or wherever it might be. For consistency review, we laid out in your resolution several policies. I'd like to highlight the future land use element that asks us for the promotion of and provision of parks, for sustaining and ensuring social and economic health, and of course, supporting active and passive recreation. The mobility element had the majority of policies supporting health in all policies with, of course, safe routes to schools, public enforcement so that we can be safe, improving air quality. I picked this picture in particular because this is a sidewalk that will now allow children who live in Sulfur Springs safe access to Chamberlain High School. That sidewalk finally got put in 2017, and we know that both places have been around a little longer than that. So, this is a great victory. In our neighborhood element, we want to be promoting complete and well-structured neighborhoods that allow for promotion of walking and biking and transit. And our environmental element says, let's promote health and safety and welfare for those who live and work in their communities. With that short, I hope, story on how we came to this objective and the policies in the comprehensive plan that we are asking your approval of, we are recommending that you find the text amendment consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the city of Tampa want to speak on this? Nope, okay. Any public comment on this item? No public comment? Any questions from Commissioners?
No, I'd like to... first of all, thanks, Michelle. I think this is... now, this would be the... which... what number? If we adopt this for Tampa Comprehensive Plan? I mean, have we adopted the same resolution for...
Oh, no, no. It's going to be a policy. Objective and policy. So, with the MPO, we adopted 19 indicators on our resolution. So, this one will, you know, there are different forms of the same approach.
No, you started by saying, you know, this is a four-year sort of effort. And I can certainly appreciate the amount of work that went into this. I do think it's really important. I guess for those of us who are involved in, you know, in design and planning and development, we sort of often forget that there is that human element that is so, so important. And, you know, this... when we first started talking about this years ago, of course, it sort of reminded me of what I think all of us probably studied in school, leading up to these types of policies that addressed everything from housing to transportation. And of course, what I'm referring to is the seminal work by Jacob Rees in the 1890s, certainly in his book in New York on How the Other Half Lives. And of course, you know, those recommendations led to new policies that changed housing in New York City. It introduced a whole new policy for tenement housing, let's say, as a result. So, I'm not sure if we'll have the same sort of impact with this, but I'm hoping it will have, you know, a major impact nevertheless, because, like I say, I do think it's really important. And I often have to remind myself, you know, because I constantly tell my students this also, is at the end of the day, we have to always remember, regardless of the endeavor that we're involved in, it's always, at the end of the day, it's always about the human experience. And what have we done to enhance the human experience? Okay? So, I applaud you and staff for bringing this before us. And I'd be glad to make a motion if there are any other comments.
Let me just see. Any other questions, comments from Commissioners? Please make your motion. Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for the Planning Commission to find the proposed request for Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment 19-3 consistent...
19-13.
19-13, I'm sorry, consistent. Forward this on to the city of Tampa.
Got a motion by Commissioner Green? We've got a second by Commissioner Press. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item three, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, has been continued until January. So, we'll move on to item number four, which is Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment 19-15.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Danny Collins, and with the Planning Commission staff. And this is Tampa Plan Amendment 19-15. The subject site is located in the central Tampa Planning District. It's within the historic Ebor neighborhood. And more specifically, it's also in the Ebor City Village. This is an area of the subject site. You'll see the site's shown in blue, and it's outlined in black color. It's located here on East 3rd Avenue, between North 19th Street and North 17th Street. It's just two blocks north of Adamo Drive. This is a close-up area of the subject site and the surrounding properties. To give you a better idea of the development pattern, you'll see some, you know, a mix of light commercial, light industrial uses just to the east and south of the site. This area, these buildings over here are Philip Shore Elementary School. And then, this area to the north of the site is kind of a mix of trending away from the industrial. And you're seeing more residential just to the north of the site. This is an image looking at the subject site. This is looking north from East 3rd Avenue. This is looking at an adjacent property to the east of the subject site. This is another image looking east on East 3rd Avenue. The subject site would be on our left-hand side. This is looking west on East 3rd Avenue. The subject site would be on our right. And this is looking south on East 3rd Avenue. The subject site would be behind us. Just a quick background of the request. This is a privately initiated request. It's a small-scale amendment. It's just under a quarter acre in size. The request is to change the future land use from general mixed-use 24 to urban mixed-use 60. This is the current adopted future land use map. You'll see the site here. It's outlined in this black color. It's shown as... this is the GMU 24. The Comprehensive Plan expects that over time the GMU 24 category will transition to a development that's compatible with the surrounding area. This area to the north, you'll see a mix of CMU 35. And then, this red that's just north of the subject site and to the west is the CC 35. This area shown in blue to the east and south is UMU 60. And then, you'll also see some GMU 24 to the west of the subject site, and then, light commercial and heavy commercial as you get down south more towards Adamo Drive. This is the proposed future land use. This is how the map would look if the request were to be adopted. This is a slide that's showing the potential impacts. As you'll see, the proposed amendment would allow for an increase in development potential by allowing higher residential density and greater commercial intensity on the site. The Planning Commission staff has reviewed the amendment and found the request supportive of many of the policies in the Comprehensive Plan as it relates to housing the city's population, the city planning strategy, neighborhoods and development, redevelopment in urban villages. The development of the site for residential uses would provide opportunities for residents to live in proximity to jobs in the central business district channel side in Ebor City with convenient access to transit on a Domino Drive. The amendment would also provide an opportunity for redevelopment of a vacant and underutilized site that could support and promote the efforts in Ebor City. Based on those considerations, the Planning Commission staff found the... recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Comprehensive Plan. And that's all I have. The applicant's here, if you guys have any questions.
Okay. Would the applicant like to speak on this item? You have 15 minutes.
Sure, be glad.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Commission members. My name is Mark Bentley, 401 East Jackson Street, Tampa 33602. I represent the applicant. It's the Capitano family. The intent here is to facilitate a redevelopment project at the northwest corner of 3rd Avenue and 19th Street, just west of Philip Shore and just north of Corral with Disco Historic Cigar Factory. It's on the other side of the street. What I've given you here, if we look at page one, on the bottom, there's a parcel A that's already UMU 60. And to the west is the subject property, GMU 24. So, what we're trying to do is integrate these two parcels for a residential redevelopment project. And the way you're... And the way your Comprehensive Plan works is that if you have two land uses that are dissimilar, then you cannot transfer entitlements from one parcel to another. I've been on the losing side of that argument, Melissa, a few times. So this is the approach we took. So in any event, once we hopefully have both properties UMU sixty, then we can transfer entitlements. For example, what Mr. Collins showed you is the building on Nineteenth. If you look at the second page, that's known in the neighborhood as the Flophouse, and you can see the white building is the, after the renovation of the Flophouse. So on that particular parcel, which is parcel A, there'd only be 21,000 square feet of entitlements. But right now, there's a surplus. The comp plan allows about 30,000 square feet. So the intent was to transfer the balance of the thirty, about 8,000, over to parcel B, along with the approval, hopefully tonight, or the recommendation for approval to Tampa City Council. And then when all the smoke clears, we'd have roughly a fifty-five unit redevelopment project consisting of about 40,000 square feet. So that's what we're trying to accomplish. So your staff's in support of the proposed amendment. Likewise, City of Tampa staff, and I know Ms. Anthony's here, and their staff's in support as well. So we would respectfully request your positive recommendation to the Tampa City Council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment on this item? No public comment? Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner?
It's more of a comment. So this property is zoned for BT Washington Elementary and Blake High School, which are both at or beyond 100% capacity with this improvement. So the applicant, further down the line, may have to pay proportionate share mitigation if it fails the test at that time.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments from commissioners?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Bentley. I think this is, this is, this is, this is good. I think it's another example of, of creative ways to look at urban infill development. And I think we need more of this, these types of approaches throughout much of, much of the city. Thank you for providing this, even though we can't comment on this.
No, I understand.
It's a very, very handsome project, nevertheless. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we find the proposed future land use designation change for the, for City of Tampa's CPA nineteen fifteen from GMU twenty-four to UMU sixty consistent with Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan, and forward the recommendation to the council.
Got a motion by Commissioner Doughty, a second by Commissioner Dickson. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Take care.
You too.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if that was somehow intentional, but what that, what that says on there, I had nothing to do with it, full disclosure.
Yeah. Said, "Go Trent" in the empty lot.
The exhibit, the exhibit on the first page that Mark handed out says, "Go Trent" on the lot next to the property.
Next up, item number five on the agenda. Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment nineteen dash sixteen.
Good evening, Commissioners. David Hay with your Planning Commission staff. The next item is a text amendment for the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. It's number nineteen sixteen. A little background about the proposed amendment. This amendment is publicly initiated by Planning Commission staff in cooperation with our partners over at the city. The proposed plan amendment seeks to establish a policy framework within the Comprehensive Plan dealing with properties designated as Transitional Use Twenty-four, or TU twenty-four for short. The TU twenty-four, future land use category, is a unique category. It's similar to that GMU twenty-four, as it allows for basically all development, residential, commercial, and light industrial uses. It was established to recognize the more, shall we say, eclectic areas of the city that were developed prior to the establishment of zoning and the Comprehensive Plan, and where there was no established development pattern at the time of the designation. The category basically avoided creating a number of non-conforming uses at that time. Previously adopted Comprehensive Plans had categorized these areas as industrial, but those references were removed over the years. In 2018, your Planning Commission staff conducted a land use analysis of the TU twenty-four areas and found seven unique areas in the City of Tampa. Most are located in East Tampa. There's some down in Permetto Beach, and there's even a small area down in South Tampa. Besides the South Tampa and the Permetto Beach areas, those, those are predominantly residential. Most of the other areas are industrial in character with heavy commercial uses, containing like major auto repair, open storage, with some scattered residential uses in those pockets as well. The proposed language, which is provided in your packet, seeks to prohibit future plan amendments to that Transitional Use Twenty-four, future land use category. Since one of the objectives of the Comprehensive Plan is to provide direction for future development, the expansion of a category that allows almost all uses would not be appropriate. The proposed language also seeks to provide a better direction at the rezoning stage to recognize existing residential uses in that TU twenty-four. The proposed language also seeks to direct staff to work with existing property owners to recommend changes to a more appropriate future land use category, and if appropriate, and the property owner agreeing, to initiate plan amendments to a more appropriate category. This strategy recognizes the city's long-term goal of either reducing the prevalence of the TU twenty-four category, or the eventual elimination of the category once all property has been changed over. That is a very long-term goal. The strategy also protects individual property rights for parcels designated as TU twenty-four, since any proposed plan amendments to a category other than TU twenty-four would need to be approved by that individual property owner. This did go out to our reviewing agencies. None of them expressed any concerns with the request. Your Planning Commission staff has reviewed the Comprehensive Plan and found that the proposed amendment, which is adding policy language regarding that TU twenty-four, future land use category, consistent with the adopted policy guidance within the Comprehensive Plan. Your Planning Commission staff found three main areas of consistency. The first area dealing, deals with the discouragement of residential and industrial uses being located within proximity to each other. By reducing the prevalence of that TU twenty-four, future land use category, we are reducing that chance for those, the uses locating next to each other, we're reducing that chance of that occurring. The other two areas deal with the promotion of compatible development. Intensive uses such as open storage or heavy auto repair can have negative impacts on residential uses. It does also work the other way. When you have established industrial, they can be negatively impact if a new residential use is developed next door, and those residents then are not in favor of the industrial use that's already there. Finally, there is policy language dealing with the establishment of unique zoning districts for future land use categories. The TU twenty-four does not further this policy. Since almost all development is permitted, the reduction in the prevalence of the TU twenty-four category would provide areas and property owners with better guidance on the overall development pattern preferred by the city. So based on that, your Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed text amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan. That concludes my presentation. The city is also here, if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. The City of Tampa staff want to speak on this at all? Okay. Any public comment on this item? No public comment? Any questions, comments from commissioners? Would someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Bernstein?
Mr. Chair, I'll move at this time to approve TACPA nineteen sixteen, which is intended to find consistent with the, the plan. The addition of language that would provide for direction to areas designated as TU twenty-four and offer additional direction that would ultimately prohibit any expansion of the TU twenty-four category.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bernstein, second by Commissioner Green. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item number six on the agenda, Tampa Comprehensive Plan nineteen dash eighty-seven.
All right. David Hay again with your Planning Commission staff. This is going to look very familiar to you all, or most of you. This is map amendment nineteen oh seven E. If you remember, the City of Tampa is looking at updating their parks. This was in the first phase of our long-term update of the city's parks on our future land use map. You did see this at the August twelfth Planning Commission public hearing. Due to a legal issue at the Parks Department and our discussions with the City Attorney's Office, we've decided to send it back to you all for your review. This time, instead of a portion, we're going to be reviewing the whole park. So here we have what was shown to you on August twelfth. You could see it was a portion of the park. Here now, we have the actual, the entire park is now being considered. You've, this is, my mouse disappeared. This is East Bird Avenue. You've got North Nebraska, of course, the Hillsborough River and two seventy-five. The tower that just had the festival is over to the west, across the interstate. Here, we're looking east toward the intersection of North Nebraska Avenue at East Sitka. This is that portion of the park. Here, we're looking southwest across off of Springs Park. Here, we're looking north up Nebraska Avenue toward the subject site. This is the park to the left. And then we're looking south. This is the park, of course, right in front, and that's the Hillsborough River behind the trees there. So this time, you could see the entire park is, is being looked at. The red is that CC thirty-five. This western portion, where the pool is and all that, that is already the recreational open space, and we're now going to be processing entire parks, even if part of it's already recreation open space. That helps reduce on legal issues. But you could see, my mouse keeps disappearing, the red, the CC thirty-five. You've got some urban mixed-use sixty to the north. You've got community, community mixed-use thirty-five to the east. Here, the whole park would now be the recreation open space. We are removing the potential for twenty-five units or, or a maximum of 64,468 square feet of non-residential. It all has to be used for a park. And just like the last time this was here, staff is recommending that nineteen oh seven E be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item? No public comment? Any questions from commissioners? No? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we recommend the proposed map amendment TACPA nineteen oh seven E be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Kress, second by Commissioner Joseph. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item number seven, Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment nineteen dash fourteen, A through G. Right. Take them one at a time and vote on each one individually.
Okay. Again, David Hay with your Planning Commission staff. This is our second phase of our city update to our parks. This is plan amendment nineteen fourteen A through G. You could see, we have actually seven, not five, locations throughout. We decided to up the number this time. Site A is Waterworks Park, which is right over here on the river. Site B is De Soto Park. Site C is, my mouse keeps, Site C is over near West Shore. D, and D is Bobby Hicks. E, down in South Tampa is Gadston. And then we move back up on the Hillsborough River. Site F is Reed Park. And Site G is Rivercrest Park. Again, these are all publicly initiated by Tampa City Council to recognize existing City of Tampa parks. Each of these parks are listed in the City of Tampa's Dedicated Park List, which is in that, in that section sixteen ninety-one, and all sites would go to that recreational open space. No concerns or objections from any of our reviewing agencies. Staff is finding that these are consistent with our, our promotion of recreation open space opportunities, our policies regarding those. The first park is, again, Waterworks Park, nineteen fourteen. It's in the Central Tampa Planning District, and more specifically, the Tampa Heights Neighborhood. Here, we have, my mouse, there we go. The site is right there. It's right basically north of the Ashley Drive interchange with the Interstate two seventy-five. Ulailey, the restaurant, is just to the north of the subject site. Of course, this is the Armature Works up here. This is North Tampa Street. And then you've got Blake High School across the river, over on North Boulevard. Here we are. We'll take a few pictures. We get to do these field trips out to the parks, which isn't a bad thing. Looking northwest, we're looking northwest from Waterworks Park toward Ulailey. That's this building here, and then the river's off in the distance. Here, we're looking east from the center of the park toward the splash pad area. And then we're looking south from the center of the park toward downtown Tampa. You can see the pavilion. Here, we have the adopted future land use map. You could see the park and all the properties, Ulailey, the Armature Works, the Law School. It's all in that regional mixed-use one hundred, future land use category. As you get over to Franklin Street, in the red, that's the Community Commercial thirty-five. And then you could just see the northern portions of the Central Business District to the south, and then we have public uses partly on Blake High School, and then portions of the school are the Res twenty. So if this is approved, it would go to that recreational open space, represented by the green. We are removing, even though there are City of Tampa, with that land use, there is the potential for three hundred and seventy-one units or a maximum of 565,000 square feet. That would not be permitted. All uses would have to be recreation, recreational-focused, basically. So surprise, your Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed map amendment nineteen fourteen A be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Okay. Any public comment on this item? We're talking about nineteen dash fourteen A. Any public comment? Any questions from commissioners?
Go through all of them.
Oh, he's going to do it individually?
Oh, you're going to do them individually?
Yeah. That's the way he's doing it. We'll just vote on them individually.
Okay.
And that way, if there's an issue, we're not lumping them all together. Probably makes it easier in case there might be an issue or something with one of them. So.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we find the proposed map amendment TACPA nineteen fourteen A consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan, and forward it on to the Tampa City Council. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Joseph, a second by Commissioner Green. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now, we'll move on to nineteen dash fourteen B.
Next one, nineteen fourteen B, De Soto Park. It's in the Central Tampa Planning District, and more specifically, the Permetto Beach Neighborhood. Here, we have the park. This is McKay Bay. This is Twenty-Second Street. The port is further off to the west. This is mostly single-family detached. It's directly south of De Soto Elementary, which is right here with the red roof. As you go east, it does get more industrial. This property is under development currently for a warehouse. And then the city's trash recovery facility is over on Thirty-Fourth. Here, we're looking southwest from Corrine Here we're looking southwest from Corrine Street toward DeSoto Park, and McKay Bay is off in the distance. Here we're looking west. We're standing in the park, looking west across the park, and then that's DeSoto Elementary directly across the street. Here we're in the park, looking southeast toward that industrial uses and the trash recovery facility, and there's that site that's under development for warehouses. And then to the north of this park, there are some residential uses on Corrine Street. Here we have the future land use map, the currently adopted future land use map. You could see the western portion of the park is already the recreational open space. The eastern portion is that residential 35. You can see it's also to the north. We've got the light industrial. There's some residential 20 to the north and residential 10 to the west. Then here's the entire park, all recreation open space. We're removing the potential for 224 units on that residential 35 portion, and we're also reducing, we're removing the hundred, the potential for 175,371 square feet. All uses must be recreational. Based on that, Planning Commission staff recommends that 1914B be found consistent with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment on this item? Any questions from commissioners? Okay, no questions? Would someone like to make a motion for 1904, 19-14B?
I'll go ahead and make the motion again, I guess. A motion that we find proposed map amendment TACPA 1914B consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan and forward it on to the Tampa City Council.
Motion by Commissioner Joseph, we got a second? Second by Commissioner Bernstein. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Whoops. The wrong button. Next, we have, I hit the right button, 1914C. This is Cypress Point Park. It's over in the West Shore Planning District. It's a very unique shape park. You could see this is West Cypress Boulevard. This is actually the main entrance here to the park. It's through an office complex, actually. The area is predominantly office in character. This is the Memorial Highway, State Route 60, and Interstate 275 interchange, and the airport's directly to the north, off, out of the frame. Here we're looking southeast from the main entrance into the park. Here we're looking southwest. We're in the park. We're looking toward Tampa Bay, out toward the Howard Franklin. Here we're in the park, looking southeast across the subject site toward the West Shore Business District and the office buildings. And you've got to get a picture of the beach. Looking northeast from the subject site toward Rocky Point. Okay. It's really hard on this map, but actually up there it's easier. You can see the majority of the park is already the recreation open space. The entrance isn't. That's the MAP. And then this portion over here. So those are the main areas that we're looking at changing. All this gray around is that airport compatibility district. You've got other public lands to the north. This is related to the airport. And then you get just to the south of the interstate, the regional mixed-use 100, which is that purplish color. And then you've got some environmentally sensitive land that you can see with that light green. It's hard to tell, but now the whole park is that green represented by the recreation open space. Since it is that MAP, there's no residential, so it's too close to the airport. But it would remove the potential for up to 200,000 square feet of non-residential uses, and all future uses would need to be recreationally oriented. So therefore, your staff recommends that 1914C be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan.
Okay, any public comment on this item? No public comment? Any questions from commissioners? Questions? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll also move.
Commissioner Bernstein?
Motion that we find TPA, TACPA 1914C consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, got a motion made by Commissioner Bernstein, second by Commissioner Crass. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to, just wanted to thank you, David, for your sacrifice in going out and taking pictures of these parks and waterfront areas. Good, good job. Good job, thank you, sir.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next up, 19-14D.
Okay, this is our next park. It's Site D. It's Bobby Hicks Park in the South Tampa Planning District, and more specifically, it's in the Gandy Sun Base South Neighborhood. This is an area of the subject site. You'll see it's outlined in this red color. Majority of the site is from the area, it looks like it's underwater. This area right here is the recreational park area. You'll see that it's surrounded by, you know, residential on all sides. This is Robinson High School just to the south. And then this is the North Manhattan, just to the west of the subject site, running north to south. This is looking at the entrance sign to the park. This is looking west at one of the pavilions at the park. This is looking east at the park's pool. This is from West Mango Avenue. This is an image just looking north into the subject site from West Mango Avenue. This is now at the north side of the park, just looking at some of the residents to the north along West Bay Avenue. And then this is kind of looking south from West Bay Avenue into the park. This is the adopted future land use map. You'll see that a majority of the site in this green color is recreation open space. This area to the north is residential 10, which we're requesting a change for. You'll see to the north and east is a single-family or residential 10. This area to the south in blue is public semi-public. That's Robinson High School. And then you'll see this residential 35 and the CC 35 just to the west of the subject site. And this is the adopted future land use map, or the proposed future land use map. Just like the previous parks, this request would remove the potential for residential development on the site. Currently, they can get seven, potentially up to 78 units of residential development or up to 119. This would remove that potential. Based on those considerations, the Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed map amendment 1914D be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment on this item? No public comment? Any questions, comments from commissioners? Someone like to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion again, I guess. Motion that we find TACPA 1914D, we up to, consistent with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan 2040 and forward it on to the Tampa City Council.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Joseph, second by Commissioner Dowdy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. 1914, or E.
Our next park is also in the South Tampa Planning District and more specifically in Antrim Bay Neighborhood. It's Gadsden Park, and this is Site E in your packet. This is an area of the subject site. It's outlined in this red color. You'll see that there's residential to the north and east of the subject site. This area to the south is McDill. This is looking at the entrance to the park from West Markham Street. This is just one of the entrance signs from West Markham Street going into the park. This is looking south at the subject site. We're also on West Markham Street. This is looking east on West Markham Street, so the subject site will be on our right-hand side. This is just looking north within, standing within the park. And this is looking at just one of many trails that I found when I was out taking photos within the park. This is the adopted future land use map. The site has residential 6, which is shown in this yellow, yellowish color. This blue is, just demonstrates, or is just an indicator of the water that's currently on the site. And then this green is the recreation open space. This is the adopted future land use map. Again, this would remove the potential from residential and potential commercial development on the site. Based on those considerations, the Planning Commission staff recommends that proposed map amendment 19, or Tampa Plan Amendment 1914E be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment on this one? Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner?
That area to the left there, that gray area, the heavy industrial? Who, I guess, is there something there? Who owns that, or that also belonged to the park, or?
It's not, it doesn't belong to the park. I don't know who the owner is.
Okay.
Part of it is McDill Air Force Base, that area immediately to the west. And then there's some other private owners where the industrial parcel fronts Del Mayberry.
Any other questions? Someone like to make a motion?
I'll move that, funny commission, find the proposed land use designation change for TACPA 1914E consistent with Imagine 2040 Comprehensive Plan and forward it to the City Council.
Motion by Commissioner Dowdy, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Green. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. 19-14F.
Jennifer Malone with your Planning Commission. I'm going to round it out with some parks in Seminole Heights. So we're going to start at Reed Park. This is the outline right here. It's a little bit of an interesting shape, but we have West River Heights Avenue, Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard is further to the south, and then this is the Hillsborough River. This is facing southwest, and this is the entrance to Reed Park. That bungalow is actually owned by the City of Tampa, and they lease it out to a nonprofit group, and that is on the park. So nobody's living there, it's just an office space. And this is facing north. The Hillsborough River is a little bit in the view over here. And this is looking west, right towards the Hillsborough River. It was very idyllic. The adopted future land use is residential 20. We also have residential 10 within the area. That's the orange color. And then the community mixed-use 35 to the south in the pink, and then, of course, the Hillsborough River. And this future land use map amendment would change this to recreation open space. And again, that would remove any potential for residential or square footage on the subject site, and it would only be allowable as a park if this is approved, and we did find it consistent.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment on this item? No public comment? Any questions from commissioners? Someone like to make a motion?
I can do it, it's just nine of one. Recommend that the proposed map amendment TPA 1914F be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan.
Got a motion by Commissioner Crass? Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Joseph. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And the last one.
Last but not least, Rivercrest Park. We're in the Central Tampa Planning District, also in the Seminole Heights Urban Village. This is the outline of the park. It's also up against the Hillsborough River. This is the corner of East Osborne Avenue and North River Boulevard, the entrance to the park. This is the trail facing west. It's also gorgeous, facing west towards the Hillsborough River. So you can get in, there's even a bench here. And then the adopted future land use, this has two land uses, but we're processing it as one whole folio and one whole parcel. So it is, half of it is already recognized as recreation open space, and the other half of it is recognized as residential 10. We also have some residential 10 already in the area. This is actually Reed Park right to the south and the residential 20 that I just showed you. And the blue is Broward Elementary School. And if approved, this would take the entire site to recreation open space. And again, that would remove any potential for residential or non-residential on the subject site. It would only be a park, and we did find it consistent.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item? Any questions from commissioners? Would someone like to make a motion on this last one?
I'll make a motion. Motion to find the proposed map amendment TACPA 19-07G be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan.
I apologize that.
It's actually 19-14G. That slide's wrong.
My apologies.
No, my apologies. It was an error in my presentation. I apologize.
I should have been listening more carefully. Yeah.
Trying to trick up the rug.
That's a newbie mistake.
That's why I'm staying on it.
You're a smarter man than I, Giovanni. Can I amend my motion?
Yes.
I'd like to amend my motion to substitute 19-14G for 19-07G.
Second.
I'd second that. So amended motion.
Yep, we got a motion by Commissioner Bernstein and a second by Commissioner Dix. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That is our last item. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
It's kind of unusual.